All right, good evening and welcome to the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education Meeting for Tuesday, May 2nd. If you all please rise and join me in pleasure.
By the way, this is the United States of America and a true republic for religious stands, one nation under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve. Hey, second, Lori, all in favor, that would be seven oh.
Well, he's here, so it's seven.
Well, someone showed up to the meeting.
Yeah, we are extremely excited by that. So, next order of business is board recognition. We're pleased to be able to recognize both our school nurses and Spencerport schools' teachers. And I have a couple of proclamations I'd like to read into the record. Whereas all students have a right to learn in a healthy and safe environment, and whereas children today often require specialized medical attention in school, which calls for professional and complex care during instructional hours. And whereas school nurses are devoted to their profession to ensure the well-being, success, and lifelong achievements of all students by providing comfort, compassion, and care. And whereas school nurses advocate for children and their wellness within the school community, parents, and healthcare providers. And whereas school nurses serve as members of school-based mental health teams, and whereas school nurses provide invaluable expertise, support, and guidance in all health-related matters. And whereas the contributions and tireless work of our school nurses impacts our students and learning community every day. Excuse me. Now, therefore, be resolved that the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education proclaimed May 2nd, 2023, to be School Nurse Appreciation Day, and be further resolved that the Spencerport Central School District Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our school community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our school nurses for their dedication and devotion to this work. I personally would like to just add a note as well. I know, having had four kids go through the school and spend more than a few moments in the school nurse's office, the amount of compassion and care and, you know, the ability to make a child that's kind of in a bad place feel a whole lot better is an amazing feat and stuff. So, I've had my own personal thanks. If anybody else has anything they wanted to add?
Anecdotally, this year Charlie got pretty injured at school, and they had every nurse and a lot of the teachers took care of her. And it was one of those times where I felt very, very fortunate to be in the school district. They were, you know, they kept me very level-headed and took very, very good care of her. So, you know, and just come still, COVID isn't that far away, just coming through COVID and everything the teachers and the nurses endured during that. You know, I'm still thankful all the time for the work that they did.
No, I'm sorry. I will just add too, but I think a lot of times when we think of a school nurse, we think of just ice packs and Band-Aids and bloody noses. And coming from a parent perspective, whose child often used the school nurse as just a safe place to check in, the person who always said hello, who provided Band-Aids even when a Band-Aid maybe wasn't necessary, but a Band-Aid served is more than just something to cover your skin. I really recognize the amount of contact they have with our students and how important they are, not just for their physical health, but for their emotional health too.
Thank you. Okay, and now I'd like to read one about our wonderful Spencerport teachers. Whereas our Spencerport teachers entered a profession with hopes and aspirations to educate and impact children's lives. Whereas our teachers do indeed achieve these aspirations with an unwavering commitment to educate each student. And whereas our teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service. And whereas our teachers demonstrate through their instruction that all children can learn, regardless of their learning style, and work to instill a determination and confidence within each student that they can successfully graduate and be citizen, college, and career-ready. And whereas our teachers continuously challenge themselves in pursuing professional growth and opportunities, which in turn benefit students. And whereas our teachers collaborate on curriculum, pedagogy, and assessment strategies to build on the strengths and challenges for each student. And whereas our teachers engage students with ever-changing technologies to prepare students for the 21st century. And whereas our teachers understand their influence on each student and our shared responsibility for them with families, colleagues, administrators, and the community to prepare them socially and academically for the future. And whereas our teachers model and implement the mission every day to educate and inspire each child to love learning, pursue excellence, and use knowledge, skills, and attitudes to contribute respectfully and confidently in an ever-changing global community. And now, therefore, be it resolved that Spencerport Central School District Board of Education claims May 1 through 5, 2023, to be Teacher Appreciation Week. And be further resolved that Spencerport Central School District Board of Education strongly encourages all members of our school community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work. I don't know that I could add a whole lot more to that, except to say a personal thank you for the work that y'all did for our four kids and for our students throughout the community. It's, I think, Miss Hinman mentioned that it's probably one of the hardest jobs to do, and I couldn't agree more. It's an amazing effort that it takes to put it in, put in the work every day to come to the schools, be prepared, and to project positivity for our kids each and every day. So, I want to thank you very much personally.
I just wanted to add, just to Joe and STA that went here. You know, people think teachers are seven to four, 185 days a year, and that's about it. But I know as a veteran teacher and a teacher's here, it's laying in bed at night thinking about something. This is him and you know, about get up in the morning thinking, I gotta do these things like first thing to get these things done. It is 24/7, seven days a week, even on weekends. You know, I know that teachers go through that. I know, I know our board knows it. And besides being a bus driver in the winter, like you mentioned, it is by far one of the toughest jobs. On a good day or bad day, when you see a teacher do it right, it looks easy, but it's not. It really isn't. I mean, for a talented teacher to make all the wheels, keep all those plates in the air, and it's even behind the classroom. You know, juggling 20, 25 kids is tough enough, elementary, high school. Kidding our teachers, they're going straight to heaven. They're dead. Even beyond that, I mean, they have those kids in the class, everything other than instruction is so important. You know, instruction kind of takes seconds, but they're still hit the home run. And then you have before school, before-class duties, responsibilities. It's truly amazing what the STA, every teacher, every person in this group goes to to make this district take the weight does.
I just want to say that I was very truthful during the meet the candidates session just now when I said that several of my Spencerport teachers inspired me on my life's journey. And I do hope that the teachers in our district know how huge of an impact they have on the lives of their students. And I see it in my own kids. I see how the teachers at the school are impacting the choices that they're thinking about and the choices that they'll be making soon in terms of what they might choose to do in their life beyond school. And I just, I really appreciate the dedication and the hard work that you all put into that and how big of an impact you have on the students and our community.
Thank you all very much. All right, with that, moving on to the agenda to pivot to the floor. We do not have any today. Okay, so we're gonna move on to consent agenda. If whoever made the motion, if we would recognize the fact that we have two addendums to both the classified and certificated portions of the consent agenda. I have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda with the addition of the certificated addendum and classified addendum.
Thank you. Do you have a second, please? We have all in favor, seven oh. Moving right along, Board of Education reports. I really don't, given it's only been a week since we last together in this room. I really don't have anything. I'm gonna do a little commercial though for the Spencerport Education Foundations Trivia Night, May 31. Does anybody want to have a team?
May 31, Chris is it?
May 31, it's a Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Wood Kendall, I think. So, you in?
Only a tie will be on.
Yeah.
No, only a tie won't be on.
No.
As a Canadian, that's disturbing.
Well, let's consider a team. We don't have to have the answer tonight, but I'll send out an email and see who wants to join and we'll go see what's going to tell. So, we can make ourselves look like.
Not for report tonight, no.
Kate, you've been a while. You want to say something?
Glad to be here.
All right, nothing, David, nothing. Okay, over that, we're about an hour ahead of schedule. Off to you.
So, before we into our presentations, I too just wanted to give a point of appreciation to our teachers and our nurses. Leah, you know, she shared what was on my mind. I too have a son who would every day visit the nurse's office, not because he needed something, but what he needed was reassurance. And so, for the hard work of our nurses and obviously our teachers. I was talking to my children the other day, we're having dinner, and I said, "What do you think makes a great teacher?" And they said two things. One, they work hard to get, well, they said, they get need, you know? And so, if you think about it, our teachers have over 3,500 kids to get and all of their unique personalities and their needs and their strengths. And also, they share teachers who really love what they do, and it just comes out in everything and how they show up in the classroom. So, for all of the days in which you are working to get kids and show up in your classrooms in the best possible way, so I also wanted to say thank you as we approach Appreciation Week. The other appreciation that I'd like to really just share is a recognition to Jamie and her HR department. So, I have a brother-in-law who's a CPA, and I always watch like that cyclical calendar, and he is burning the candle at both ends towards tax season. And I've been watching Jamie and I've been watching the HR office, and they're burning the candle at both ends. There are a lot of interviews, a lot of orchestrating going on and meetings being had. So, thank you to you and your staff. It's really important, again, as we talk about teachers, just the work that goes behind securing the best instructional staff that we can for the district. So, kudos to what you're doing.
Really?
So, moving into then our presentations, I'm going to invite Jonathan to the podium, please, for Code of Conduct and our Safe Plan. Chris, if you would also come to the podium? I'm sorry, Jonathan?
Up here or back there?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Wherever you're comfortable.
I like it better.
Come on up, Jonathan. Come on up, Chris.
Good evening, everybody. Jonathan and I are going to do just a brief review of the changes to the Safe Plan. Jonathan's gonna cover for kind of ten minutes, but if you're not familiar with the Safe Plan, it's a state-required plan, a district-wide safety plan for the, for all the buildings in the district. This year, basically, the, this is a summary of the requirements. Adapted and amended yearly, so we have to review it every year to make sure it's up to date. Also requires changes and adoptions to be approved by you folks on the district. Members of the committee, the district Health and Safety Committee will review these changes as they, as we present them to them in the next year or next week or so, excuse me. And then the recommendations for changes are made to the board for your approval. Because again, the requirements of the plan, every Safe Plan New York State is required to have these requirements responding to, we have to outline these items in the plan responding to threats of violence, responding to actual acts of violence, which are, you know, ten big headlines in the local area recently. Protocols for responding to threats. Safe evacuations, again, very topical to us here, and dealing with law enforcement and parents. So, most of the members, I'm sure, are familiar with the Altair's Consulting Group. We're in our second year, coming up around our third year of dealing with Altair's. The first year, they did a complete assessment of the district and made safety and security recommendations in a written assessment. This year, their major contribution to the district is a review of all our safety plans, not just the district-wide safety plan that we're talking about tonight, but they are also in the process of reviewing each individual building plan. And the goal of that is to make sure that all the plans mesh together, that they work together, they don't conflict, and that they meet all the requirements, obviously, from set by the state of New York. The, the building-level plans have a lot of confidential information in them that we're not going to be reviewing tonight or even looking at right away. We'll see most of those over the summer. I think those are required to be updated by the end of July according to our Safe Plan. The real, the really nice thing about what Altair's has done for us is they've streamlined these plans. Our last, our current Safe Plan is about 56 pages, had a lot of information that frankly didn't need to be in there and shouldn't be in there, including building maps and things of that nature. They took a lot of that out. Some equipment list that didn't need to be in there, and they provided relevant citations. So, as you look through the plan, and the plan will be available to you here at the end of the week to review where we made changes or where they make recommendations or state what is mandated, they also give the relevant citation. So, if you had questions or wanted to know why are we doing things a certain way, you can look at the bottom of the page and reference this as a citation yourself. The updates to the plan, this year, basically, some of the positions and contacts were changed and updated. Some emergency protocols, we've discovered, we were, I want to say, maybe a little lax in notifying the general community of our specific emergency response protocols. So, we came up with a brochure that was developed by Altair's, and we've distributed that on the website. We also became aware of some MOUs that we probably should have in place. We have MOUs that were current that needed to be refreshed and updated, so we've been able to do that, all as a recommendation of Altair's as they reviewed our plans. And then the building-level plans, as I said, we'll be reviewing those and updating those in June and July, bring them forth in August and September for your approval. Those plans are a little more confidential information, specifically how we deal with certain emergencies, the building maps and diagrams, and contact information and phone numbers. So, that pretty much wraps up changes to the Safe Plan. I know I went through that pretty quickly. Does anybody have any questions about the Safe Plan, the district-wide safety plan? Sorry for the confusion at the beginning. I guess I should have started with my section first this time. For the past five years, we've typically done the Safe Plan first, then we hit the Code of Conduct changes. The Safe Plan is actually made up of two parts with the district safety plan and then the Code of Conduct. So, these kind of go together when we do the public hearing for these documents. For the purposes of anyone here who wouldn't know what the Code of Conduct is, it is the code that provides for the maintenance of order on school grounds. It has the prohibited conduct, the conduct which both visitors, staff, as well as students, applies to all of them. It applies to everyone on school grounds, and it must be reviewed and approved by the Board of Education each year. After the board approves it, then it must be filed with the SED Commissioner within 30 days after the adoption, from a procedural standpoint. However, it really is the document that is used by the buildings. It's used by even human resources at times, because it applies to everyone who's on campus. Our process this year was the formation of a subcommittee of the Health and Safety Committee. We did a survey of administrators, discussed proposed changes with a couple of board members who were on our subcommittee. We received feedback from the building administrators regarding some of the proposed changes, even as latest of this afternoon, for the changes that we'll be putting in front of you on Friday to go to the public hearing, which we'll get to in a minute. Had a chance to review those changes with the superintendent and then bring them to your attention here tonight. Our committee members, as I said, two board members, as well as two assistant principals, one from the high school and one from the middle school, to work through some of the potential revisions to the Code of Conduct. First off, the quickest one is just an update to one of the pages at the beginning of the code where we had information regarding the old tip line. Now that we've adapted to the Safe School Health Line, you see the updates of the information, the contact information, so that students and families get that firsthand. We also have the same information on the website. This is a redacted version, just because the stuff on the website was much more comprehensive. But the, if she, the page in the Code of Conduct from here was on the district website. One of the kind of themes that our subcommittee started talking about was modernizing and updating the provisions of the Code of Conduct. We did get some good feedback from administrators regarding the need to do that, as well as we had individuals who did their own work on the side and just noticed that some of what we have, the code has essentially been built upon for years without ready any elimination of the provisions. It was originally written by attorneys, I think, with the New York State School Boards years ago. It's been adapted, modified, and then just expanded over the years. One of the tasks that we took was updating and modernizing the dress code guidelines. We decided that there were at least seven exclusionary principles in the dress code. We narrowed that down to four, really covering shoes. That was an IDV one. Everybody had to wear shoes, but vulgarity, substances, and headwear. Those are just, you know, quick terms for those. But basically, the idea is simplifying it for readability, as well as establishing that students are responsible with their parents or guardians for their dress in the schools. It also does clarify that the building principal is responsible for updating and advising families and students as to any changes in the dress code throughout the year. So, it keeps that, it gives a little more element to the relationship between the principal and the student and the families, while still maintaining the fact that the board is setting some things that are, that you can't change. You gotta have, your clothes can't reflect illicit substances. There's vulgarity and other things that are just not allowed. Those are not changed by the principal as much as they are put forth in information to the students and families. Then, a lot of what we focused on was updating some of the provisions of the student, the prohibited conduct. Specifically, on this slide, we have the insubordinate conduct piece there at the bottom, taking pictures, videos, or audio recordings of adults or students without their knowledge and consent. So, we discussed some of the things that are taking place with cell phones in the schools, and we wanted to make sure that the conduct that was prohibited in the student code actually reflected some of the things that were going on there, if there was an incident which required taking it to a hearing. It's really about updating it to adapt to what the kids have developed with the cell phones. The disorderly conduct, that's kind of, it's a different change with that one. As part of the survey, we had some feedback that recognized that the trespassing did not actually cover parts of our grounds, like the stadium or outside on the grassy areas or outside the buildings. The provision that is being stricken there in red actually limits the application of essentially a charge of trespass to a student to places just inside the building. So, that coupled with some of the changes we make on the next page, kind of simplified, and we adapted some of the principles that we borrowed from another school district, which really geared towards a simplified approach to what was prohibited, putting the title there without a lot of verbiage. We did add some for inciting or participating with other students to intimidate or act with physical violence, really again focusing on the cell phones and students who are inciting other kids to act or, and then filming it. But then adding a couple of things like sexual harassment, sexual offenses, those stated very simply, but we noticed that they weren't contained within the code. After a student issue that led to a hearing, we were, I was working with an assistant principal who looked through the Code of Conduct, and those items weren't actually in the code as a prohibited item. All that was in the code was inappropriate physical contact. Not a lot of definition to that, and that could apply to a student-on-student issue as much as it could apply to ridiculously, I mean, whatever you could think of, I guess. I'm sorry, edit example. I decided that to go there. So, the, again, the change on the left there, recording or posting, really reflects what the students are doing with the bikes and modifying what we already have to update for what they're doing right now with the cell phones. Moving along with more prohibited student conduct, this was a point made by one of our subcommittee members that some of what we have in the code is really kind of just outdated, possibly unnecessary. Prohibited conduct, riding to school on a bicycle, not wearing a helmet without your parents' permission. I don't know how we're gonna prove that in a hearing. I'm not gonna necessarily bring the parent in to testify against their own child, that they didn't give permission to a student to ride there without the helmet. So, there's some things here that we just thought needed to be stricken from the code and updated. I don't know when or how long they've been in there. At some point, they may have been necessary, but what we have now, some of those just seem a little dated. And then we have a provision that one of our subcommittee members noticed needed to simply be updated. The original provision is in disciplinary procedures, wherein a classroom teacher can remove or disrupt a student from their class. In the code, it said for up to 45-minute equivalent of instruction, the equivalent of 45 minutes of instruction. We realized that that might have been from prior to block scheduling. So, it needed to be updated to reflect block scheduling, but then, this is where I received some feedback this afternoon, that it might have, our proposed revision may have been misinterpreted at the elementary level. So, we had to add a couple of words to clarify how that would be interpreted so that the meaning behind it was still limited in time. But then I also acquired, had to look at the time allotment chart, and that our specials are approximately 55 minutes. So, the update not only needed to reflect the block scheduling, but the special time schedule of 55 minutes instead of 45 minutes as it was before. That way, we cover all elementary teachers. And that was some feedback that we received from the building principals regarding the changes there. Before I go to next steps, are there any questions about the proposed revisions that I put forward here?
I just want to make sure that the final language on the dress code specifies that each building principal is in fact expected to have a dress code for that building and that students need to follow that dress code. I like the intro language, which suggests that students have the responsibility for choosing their own dress. But I just wanted to be crystal clear that their choices have to fall within the dress code rules that their building principal has set for. I think there's language that says it can't violate health and safety requirements, which is also true, but in addition, they have to follow the building rules.
Yes, I will double-check that. I just didn't want to cut and paste the entire, everything that we discussed in the subcommittee onto that one slide. We do have the, sorry, the line, "Each principal has the responsibility to set the building's dress code, and they will inform all students and their parents, guardians of the building's dress code at the beginning of the school year," and any reading. at the beginning of the school year and any revisions during the school year."
Okay.
So we have, I think, I think we've covered that. I just didn't want to put it all on that one slide and mesh it all together.
That's understandable. And I do just want to mention for the rest of the board that, as Jonathan alluded to, the Code of Conduct very clearly has been revised many times over the years, which is good, because we've been repeatedly updating it, but it's getting to the point now where it really, I think, needs a significant look, probably with a broader committee of folks from the district that could help us to make some even bigger and better changes to the overall document in a future year. And I think that that planning for a larger overhaul of the Code of Conduct, we'd need to start a lot earlier in a school year, so that it could be completed by the end of the school year. So just something to keep in mind for, possibly for next year.
Agreed, and I just want to make sure that the wording around headwear is cleared with building staff, because there was discussion around the specific wording that we had played around with it. I just want to make sure, we aren't, my understanding from the committee is we weren't trying to fundamentally change the way the buildings were operating. So we just want to make sure that our language is aligned with how they see it. And I don't know for sure if it was. So I just want to make sure before it goes, you know, back to the board for approval or to the community that we clarified the language works for building principals and administrators.
Yes, when we were at the safety committee meeting last Tuesday, we did review some of the changes, which included a resulting, let's say, strike through of a sentence regarding hoodies and covering the ears. We had discussed the idea of having hoodies which were pulled back away from the ears, so that staff could notice if students were wearing earbuds. But due to the difficulty of application in the rules, we decided to strike that. But I did also check with someone on the equity committee to ensure that the equity committee was not looking at any current changes with that. So we can double check the language, and I'll get those to cabinet, the changes to cabinet as well, so they can double check if there's anything that they think that would conflict with what the equity committee. Thank you. Next steps. So put a memo in front of the board for approval, for, to approve the public hearing, which is scheduled to be held next Tuesday, as well as publication of a legal notice for the public hearing. Assuming that goes through, then public hearing, a 30-day review period with the documents in the superintendent's office with the safe plan on the Code of Conduct, and then putting the material back in front of the board at the June 20th meeting after the 30-day review. Thank you.
With that, could I have a motion, please, for a public hearing? David, second mic, all in favor, 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on, Rick is going to be presenting on our federal stimulus funding. Just as a reminder, for the federal stimulus, we need to present reviews of our funding and our revisions to any of our plans to the Board of Education. We need to make sure that we've got opportunities for parent input and staff and student input. So this is not only, obviously, a presentation to the board, but we'll make sure to post this for our community, as well as I will share in my newsletter this week an invitation for them to provide any inputs or ask questions that they might have in regards to the federal stimulus.
Thanks, Kristen. So the board has seen over 75% of these slides. But again, to Kristen's point, this is one of the assurances that we identified and what are the requirements that's necessary for receiving a federal stimulus funding. And the reason for so many repeated slides is that for those that have not seen the prior presentations, they can go to this slide and still get caught up. So with that said, again, you have three different federal stimulus packages, CARES, and then what we commonly refer to as the SIRSAA, and then the ARF-ESR Act. This is just the timeframe and the amounts that are reflective for what we receive. Now, you'll notice in the last column, the status where it says closed, we've actually completed those federal stimulus packages. We've submitted what we call a final cost report, and we've received funding for that. So those are really, you don't have access to one anymore. So again, just to go through some of those federal stimulus funding. This was the initial SIRSAA, ESSR portion of the federal stimulus. Know that a large part of what we had originally identified when this was coming out was the capital project work. We did that even though we knew that SED had not really provided a lot of guidance, who were hoping that that would come forward. And although it did, it didn't come out in a timely manner. So really, what we ended up doing is, we sort of pulled that money out. We still attributed about $590,000 towards the, what we call the Phase 3 project at the middle school. But we sort of replaced much of that with five elementary teachers and two secondary teachers, again, to address class size. Obviously, you know, based on the presentation today, that those are moving forward into the 2324 budget, and we'll sort of circle back on that. We did some things with some general session instructional services. For instance, we purchased Panorama, which is a tool, which, you know, for social emotional needs and the like. We did some upgrades in additions to purchasing classroom supplies, and a portion went to benefits because of the increase in positions. Any questions as it relates to sort of what we did for the ESSR? Okay, for the ARF-ESR, this is the 90%. Remember, there's multiple portions of this particular federal stimulus package. Again, a little over $4 million, and you can see how it was being used. Or supposed to be used. What we ended up doing, however, again, there's some fluidity to this, and we had the ability to change things on the fly. Nicole, our district treasurer, and I have been meeting two days during the week to go through the process of looking at these, looking at what our purchases are, creating amendments, submitting that to the state. And they actually have what they call an informal review and a formal review. So every change that we made, we wanted some form of verification from SED that it was an allowable extent. And she's done a phenomenal job of keeping up with that. So again, in this particular case, no, we didn't purchase the large air purifiers. We did purchase some, but not the ones that went into cafeteria, the large music rooms, and that. And some of the things we did, we did not continue with the coordinator of family and student engagement, but instead hired a high school social worker. We didn't get the RecorderX boards that we had originally identified, and we ended up purchasing laptops. So those are just some of the changes, we did upgrades for more additional furniture, especially based on the two additional sections. So those are just some of the things that we've had to go through internally to submit and get approval from SED. Any questions on the ARF-ESR 9%? Okay, this is just a refresher. Again, part of the ARF-ESR, we were entitled to state reserve funding. We had to allocate it in these three sort of buckets. So for the, for the 5%, really what we're finding here is we had identified some summer programs at the middle school and high school back in 2223 and 2224. Most didn't really come to fruition. However, what we didn't have in some of the other, our state reserves was our 2-5 academy. So what we're doing is we're taking the funds that we did not use from some of those programs, and we're shifting it into the 2-5 academy. And you can see sort of what we've done, support staff salaries. There is transportation provided, looking for, you know, paras and that to be in the classroom of the teachers. As far as the 1% comprehensive after-school program, this, you can see that right now, we've not really spent a lot of what was originally budgeted for. I do know that at the high school, they have the academic workshop, the Causa, they have the Ranger reboot. But this really is an area that we're looking to see how we can use differently and to get more involvement. This may be a case where we don't spend all of what we're allotted for a variety of different reasons. Before I jump onto the next one, if you have any questions, because this is probably the one that my sense is, we probably won't be able to use all of that funding. So what happens in that case is just the bad, right? Yeah, we would submit what we spent. If we received more, then we would essentially return that to the state, and then it would probably go back to the federal government.
Is there anything we can do at this point to prevent that from occurring?
We're currently looking at, you know, Ty, if you wanna maybe add us a little more?
Yeah, I think we've been really creative in, you know, trying to spend opportunities for students, whether it's virtual or in person. Yes, so buying has been difficult.
Okay.
Is that number 61? Well, that's just sort of based on, you know, sort of where I think we're gonna be, you know, using about half. But again, you know, this is 2223, this is where we're at right now. Remember, we've got essentially two more months of this, and then this program ones farther out. So, you know, again, I think we have been pretty, not even tying instructional staff, and Kristen's been pretty creative in trying to come up with ideas, continue to do that. And really, that's what this is for, really, you know? So for those stakeholders who are listening and put in ideas of maybe they had that we hadn't thought about, that's part of the purpose of what we're trying to do tonight. The 1% summer school, this one, we've completed. So again, we did the jump and leap programs. We also had one summer session at the EOL program. I would love to be able to use the funding that we weren't able to use in the 1% after-school, apply it to this. But that's just not what the funding was for specifically. We have another one for the homeless and children youth. Description of it, we've not had anyone ask for requests for this funding, even though Tim O'Connor has reached out to those families. We have the IDEA portion of our ESSR. This is the section 619. We used much of that already in 2223, actually a little bit more based on some things. The 2224, this is really for a summer program for students with special needs that Andrea had actually created, and now we're working closely with Mike. Postings have gone out. So again, I think we're gonna be able to use all of that allocation. Hey, can you go back one step? So you mentioned that Tim's reached out to people and stuff. So are we, is nobody taking advantage of the fact that this money is there for them to use? Correct?
I'm not close, my mic.
Yeah. Wow, okay. Thank you. This is the 619, which is more of the preschool. Again, this is a dollar amount to date, so at the end of April, my sense is that $2,019 is probably gonna be used in the rest of this year. So our hope really is that we can close this project out as well. Any questions on really, I know it was a quick summary, but essentially all of our federal stimulus programs. Okay, so as I mentioned, we've made certain assurances to receive this funding. We were selected for what they call a targeting monitoring review. The state, and this is really a requirement that the federal government is doing, and these are the, these are what the state has come up with. There's actually three types of monitoring. There's the coordinated review, which would be onsite, full day with two reviewers. And we sort of hit in the middle with a targeted monitoring review, where it's really, it's a virtual, it's half a day, and there's one reviewer. Ty smiling because we just went through this process with our ESSR funding. And although we understand why they're doing it, it's pointy sometimes. The amount of work involved to get all of the different requirements to prove of what we assured is very time consuming, and I'm gonna provide you some examples. But again, this is our timeline, we were in group D. So again, SED designed to ensure that the LEA, the Local Education Agency, is following the programmatic and fiscal plans. Their staff will monitor for compliance and provide technical assistance. I will say that they have done a phenomenal job. Although I think we'll call it an audit, they do call it a review. But they are trying to be very helpful in making sure that we have the documentation necessary, so that when they report to the federal government, they're in compliance. So I get it. This is the review process, I won't go into it in detail, but essentially, there's a portal, we have to provide, they have certain questions. We have to provide documented evidence that meets these particular areas. Okay, so you have section one of programmatic compliance. So we have to show stakeholder engagement as well. The equitable services, when we had to work with private schools, that was really under the CARES Act only. And then the fiscal compliance of using all of those different funding sources. So this is just an example of programmatic compliance for stakeholder engagement. They'll share with you what the indicator is. So you have to share that the plans are developed with timely and meaningful consultation with corporate stakeholders. And then those are all the different examples of the type of evidence that you have to show. So I think, you know, Ty and I were sort of discussing when we went through the ESSR, you know, having meeting minutes, having notifications, emails. They ask for emails if you're going back and forth between different stakeholders. Another one is the general fiscal requirement. I think the biggest example here is, many times under federal grant, you have to do what they call payroll certification. So we have a form, we send that out to all of the individuals that work under, they get paid through federal grant, they have to sign off on it, we have to upload that. Payroll certification is another example, where I do a payroll certification every two times a month. Those are uploaded to show evidence that we're understanding who's being paid and approving that. So it's very, very time consuming.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So as it relates to the homeless and children who, in case, when we did not spend the allocation, would we get, you know, are they gonna look at the outreach that was done? Would we get dinged for not doing enough to get that information to the families to follow back?
So fortunately, I don't think that the homeless is under the target monitoring review. If it was, yes, we would absolutely. Even though no one had wanted, no one needed the funding, we would have to provide evidence. We actually did this under the ESSR, again, where any emails, any conversations, any documentation that we had, we would have to supply, even if those funding sources weren't there.
So we went for the after-school 1%. Much of what the review will ask is, to the degree in which you communicate that, so we would have to submit Sean's newsletters, my newsletters, like all of the ways in which we're trying to have people engage in those services.
Is it a work case where in that specific case, teachers can identify students? They can identify us and communicate that with parents?
That that could be an outreach source. So when we exercise, you know, so if we had presented that information to the state, they might say, can you, we're deaf, famous, but show us emails like that. You know, that's the level of proof in terms of outreach that we've gotta provide for the state.
Great question. So a recent email that Kristen and I received was from the Art Help group. And I actually thought they had some very valuable information. But this, based on all of the compilation of districts that received federal stimulus funding, we've identified that 59% of the funds are related to professional salaries, support salaries, and benefits, what they call recurring costs. So if you remember, when we first developed these budgets, we were really looking for types of expenses that were non-recurring or could build capacity. So that once that funding ended, we had individuals that could move forward and teach and do their professional development. So again, fifty-nine percent are in that vote. They provided this to us, again, there's our four million dollars, there's our state reserves, we're total four point nine. You can see that we've actually submitted what they call FS twenty-fives to receive or recoup some of that funding based on our expenditures, and these are the amounts that we'll need to to submit and get payment for. But these were the charts that I found interesting, what they did was they took a look at, red is Spencerport, green is a comparison group, and purple is the state. So for professional salaries, you can see that we are in a much higher bracket than the comparison groups and the state. So what's that saying? It's saying that we've identified more recurring costs than many of our counterparts. And you can see that across the board. Again, sustainability matrix. We are a little bit more at risk of getting into that fiscal cliff.
So I, and maybe my memory is kind of familiar here, but I thought we did a really solid job early on with all this of not doing things that were going to be recurring. Did it start to slip off that track or?
Well, if we were to go back to the slide of the SIRSAP. We had over one point seven million dollars slotted for capital improvement projects. Because of the timing, because we didn't have the proper information, sorry, okay, we slotted five elementary teachers in there. Two secondary teachers.
So I just remember looking through some of the other districts' presentations, and they're going to be in a lot of trouble.
They were hired people that were crazy. No, you know, I, I think what you're finding too, at least, you know, as I reflect back on this. You know, when we first built these, it was, it was non-recurring air purifiers, it was, you know, cleaning supplies, masks, one-time expenses. We were looking at laptops, you know, record X boards. Well, now, you know, Kristen spoke about it, social emotional needs, behavioral needs. Those are things to really help address, and that's what the community was sharing. So again, go back to our target monitoring. We heard what the community was saying, we shifted, we turned on a dime to some degree, and we started doing that in there now. You know, long range, we recognize it, you know, the plan was if we are in that scenario, begin to, we're starting to look at potential requirements. So where are we going to be able to fit?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so again, lastly, that Kristen shared, she can put that in our message for anyone in the audience, for anyone that hopefully views this. Info at Spencerport Schools with any ideas, emails, questions, suggestions, so that we can take that and try to formulate, you know, and be able to allocate that funding within the timeframe, because quite honestly, that timeline is not short. And so I tried to go as quickly as I could, but provided enough detail to make it worth your while, so. Thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Is that it?
Thank you.
All right, and with that said, then. Yeah, so any comments on the meeting or evaluation of the meeting before we move to a motion? Could I have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to adjourn, sorry.
I'll make a motion to be on our executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person.
Second that, in all favor, seven oh, thank you.